For each vehicle, anything that's sold over.
We have to send that back to DRPT, which then gets sent back to FTA for their giving us the monies for that vehicle to begin with.
So let me make sure I'm understanding this. So in order to purchase the veh- in order to place the order for the new vehicles, you need us to provide basically saying, yes, if you don't cover it with the costs, we'll make up the difference.
Correct.
And then the other question I had was, so if we don't order them this year, we potentially have to pay twice as much next year, plus any increase in funding, because we won't be guaranteed that only 2%. It could be 4% or more next year.
Right, at least always 4%. And just throwing out about next year, so our 2025 cycle that will be starting soon, we didn't ask for replacement vehicles. So really, then we wouldn't ask for replacement vehicles again until 2026 would mean almost '27 before we would get.
Okay, so when does the, like, I know we need to vote for the funds today, but when's the likelihood that any funds would need to be distributed? Like, what's the, because I know that we were dealing with the federal government, so it's different, you know, they're, they run like end of September.
Right, so once we have approval, Jennifer and I will get those ordered. We have to go online and order those now. Sunny Mayorman said they're trying to do a Thatcher turnaround, so I would say probably within three to six months. And again, that's an estimate from...
The manufacturer?
Right.
And not a ma- it's, they're constructing them, customizing them.
They're building time, yeah.
Okay. And so, once you, once we get the new ones, then we sell the old ones, and then that's when we see if there's any actual out-of-pocket.
Right.
For us.
Right. And what we, what, so Jennifer usually puts them on, on that website for us, and we usually put it on there for like a two-week period. And we watch the bids, and you can see them going up a little bit each day, but that last couple hours is when they really go up. And if it's something that we decide's not good enough, then we don't accept the bids, and then we'll put them on there again. But so far, we've not had to do that.
Can you sell them to a, another 501(c)(3)?
So we had, we have done that in the past. We used to sell to Fort County. But with, with our board, there was some, we had some talk backwards and forth, and so we've just figured out that that's the fairest way. And to be honest with you, after we started putting them on that website, we have gotten more, we've sold them at a better price than what we had before.
But theoretically, if the town decided that we wanted to make a contribution to a local 501(c)(3), we could just basically pay you that $5,100 and then contribute those vehicles. I'm not saying that we could, but we could do that, correct?
I'm looking at Jennifer.
So basically, I think what Mr. Day was asking is, can we just basically sell them to a nonprofit by which we could just sort of decide that we want to pay the $5,107, and then make that, instead of giving somebody cash, we would give them a vehicle, because that's more important to them, and it would be more, could we do that legally? Yeah. Okay. Oh, I see what you mean.
Here's, here's another question. The, my Git Gov deals, and obviously, if you can, the more money you can get, the better off you are. And I don't know how that's set up, even though I've had staff purchase off of that before. But let's say they sold for, we'll just use a, a, a $7,000. Can the locality that you work in, being the town of Pulaski, come back and make an offer above that $7,000?
So, so with that being said, if we, so even if we sold it for $7,000, $2,000 of that, we have to send back to DRPT to send back their portion to FTA.
Right.
Yes, there's no, no benefit to you guys for them to sell for more than
Correct.
5,000 apiece.
So that's why before, you know, if we were able to sell a vehicle for $8,100, then if our match was only like 5,000, Jennifer was able to sit that in, into a pot of money. But then we were audited by DRPT a few years ago, and we realized that FTA regulations had changed, so that, that's why that's done like that now.
That's when they took your extra, right?
And FDA, just for clarity, is the Federal Transportation Authority, the US government, the one who gives us most of the money?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you get, if you get $15,000 for one of them, you get to keep the difference?
No. Only up to $5,000. And that's just changed in the last three, maybe four years.
Wow, why even put it on there? It really doesn't make any sense.
It's anything that they sell it for, whether it's on Gov deals or anywhere, if they sold it for more, that they had, I remember when you, when you changed that, I remember you talking about it.
We used to do auctions out in our parking lot, let people hold up signs, and we used to do all kinds of things.
And I don't, I don't know if this is what the direction that Todd's going in, but, and I understand your point that it would require board approval. But again, since the funding is, you know, local match monies and things are coming out of this community, if, as opposed to it being sold on Gov deals to where it only benefits you guys by $5,000 apiece, if, if we were able just to purchase those off of you at, at that $5,000 apiece, if there was a benefit to the community, either in reselling them, you know, ourselves, because we wouldn't have the issue that you guys have, or if, I don't know if Todd had some other use in mind, that organization that needed them, or ourselves, that we would benefit within our community as opposed to it just being kind of, you know, you're getting 5,000 and, and it's going somewhere, but there may be a, a much larger financial benefit. And, yeah, I understand, again, your board would have to say we agree to that, but...
Yeah, I mean, I mean, so if there's an opportunity for the town of Pulaski to capitalize on, I can tell you, three months ago, we, we were desperately looking for a van. So I'm sure y'all will let me know, but just, if, if there's an opportunity, may not be that we can do it, or it's attractive to us, but if you can just communicate and let us know for something there, I appreciate it.
You can do that.
That's a great idea.
If there's no other questions.
Well, I actually just have one, it's a little unrelated, it is related, but I, it has been a little bit since we've gotten a chance to see and talk to you. Is there any updates on the micro-transit conversations and?
So we still, we've been meeting bi-weekly for several months now, and we're just now getting to the point where they've, are kind of, are getting ready to lay out what they think the pros and cons could be. Just the last week, two weeks ago, two weeks ago today, they did just tell us that we can kind of keep things the way they are and make some small adjustments, or that if we look more on the micro-transit kind of side, that what their scenario is looking at now, and again, they're still early on in looking into that, that they, that their scenario figures that there could be a cost increase of 40%. So with that 40%, then that means more local match from the town of Pulaski and, and the town of, and Pulaski County. So a lot of that cost, I would say, was you would have to have the software for your vehicles, the apps. Dispatch would have to have more software, because right now, we're still just very old-school, I guess you would say, because we still do everything just by pen and paper. But moving forward, they're going to have in the next two weeks, I'll be sending Mr. Day some of the next few chapters, which will have more details in it. I've not seen those chapters yet, but they're supposed to be getting those to me in the next few weeks that we'll share and be getting yours and put on also.
Thank you. It might be worth mentioning to the consultants that I think NRVCS has bought some software. I know I've heard that, that
They have.
For, for some, I, I don't know if it's a true micro-transit, but it's a sort of similar idea, and it might be worth asking them if we could sort of, instead of buying it ourselves, sort of add on to their contract, this as a cost-saving measure. And also just to see if they like it. I mean, because if they don't like it, at least we have one crossed off the list.
Yeah, that was pretty costly. Trevor had told us about that not long ago, so it was a pretty pricey software system.
All right.
Thank you.
Todd, do you need anything from us tonight, or do you need to build?
When, when do you have to make that?
So we, we need to have our vans ordered by the middle of November, just so we make sure that we get it in the contract year. However, what Jennifer was saying was, we have our board meeting on Thursday, so we can go ahead and add that on our board, just to see what, what they-
This coming Thursday? Yeah, you're going to need a motion to approve, and I can find the funds if you, so.
If they don't find the funds.
Yeah.
Do you want to do it then?
Sure. So I, I assume that just for the purposes of the, Todd, and Scott, tell me if I wrong, motion to approve the local match of $5,107 for the purchase of two new vehicles pursuant to the request made on September 12th. Second.
May I have a roll call for that, please, ma'am?
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Quan?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And I'll email you on the Friday.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is TG Howard request for funding, that would be Mr. Guy Smith. That's that guy right there.
Good afternoon, everybody. Seeing everybody. I'm going to take a, a, at least a minute to thank the town and everyone. I think we had a successful event for our back-to-school program, and there's been so much negative stuff about schools and communities. I just want to say, we, you know, in Pulaski did very well. And in fact, the final total of backpacks and supplies was 332. And so you need to give yourselves a hand, because there are a lot of children with bookbags and pens and pencils that probably would not have received them if we had not been partnering together. So, look, I, I grew up Baptist, so I don't believe in staying long. And so the request that TG Howard Center has is for $3,000 to assist with some various programs to offset some unexpected costs that were outside of our control. Some of you have already been to the grounds, I know Mr. Day has helped and talked to me, someone, I think the mayor, and of course, Mike, you have been there. There was an issue with water coming down off Mount Olivet. And it was something that periodically would occur when there was heavy rains, but for some reason, for like the past four months, water continued to come down the mountain through a, I guess, an opening through the, under the road, and was flooding the field. So it prevented us from being able to utilize it for kids and different programming, some other events. What you see here is a video on the TG Howard face, well, YouTube. What we had, we had a gentleman come, that actually used to work for the town. He came and dug a ditch all the way to the creek. Pies were donated, actually, I think perhaps to the town or some individuals, and some rock. So as you can see, the water was actually poured out a lot faster than that, and it was basically flooding that whole area. And so on the left side here, our intent was to cut down some of those trees, so we could have some more walking areas for families and picnic tables. On the right-hand side, which you can't see, the water would trickle, because you know, water will find its way, and it was basically saturating the field. And so there were several events that we had, you know, had hopefully planned to do, and some things with some families, but it was just like marshland. And so something unexpected, and we, we run a tight ship financially, and so this is just something unexpected that we didn't realize it was going to be this intensive. But we got a fairly good deal on it, but it would have an impact on our ability to do some things with our breast cancer awareness programs, and some of the big things we do for Christmas as well for families. And we're going to be really focused on some seniors programming, just due to the fact with the economy, it has a significant impact on those that have fixed incomes. And so we wanted to come before the council to see if it would be possible to receive some additional funding, that's $3,000, to utilize to offset these unexpected costs, and also to assist us with the further programming this year. Does anyone have any questions?
The, in the video there that you're showing us, are you guys having to, I guess, completely fill that ditch back in, or y'all putting, piping all the way down through there to cover it back up, or y'all leaving it open for, as a waterway?
We're going to leave it open and kind of beautify it. We've had to purchase some straw and some other things, some grass seeds, because at some point in time, the water used to come through there when I was a kid. And so what we want to do is just kind of beautify it. And as you can see, like, that rock area, the, the pipe is under that, so you can get to both sides of the field. And so what we want to do is take down some of those trees and clear off that high grass right there, and put benches for families. And so we're going to actually keep that, it's actually a nice little waterway now. Amazingly, the water has stopped. And, and so it, it just, this is a little bizarre, and it may be because we are not getting a lot of rain, but also, at one point in time, it was flowing for about four months straight. So we don't know if maybe something got fixed somewhere inadvertently, or something occurred. But this way, irregardless of what happens, we'll have a nice little waterway for people. The deer seem to enjoy it, they kind of stop by, get a little drink, relax a little bit, and, and this way, if it happens again, it won't affect. And actually, you can see those back steps of the TG Howard Center. There is a brown area right there, that whole area is like swamp. It was really, it's kind of bizarre, because the water would come down and trickle to that low spot. And it was, it was pretty problematic. And I think I had talked to the mayor one time, I said, you know, we spent so much time clearing this field, and actually, the town did a yeoman's work, I guess, probably like five, six years ago, to even assist with that piece. And it's, we see people come down there all the time with their kids, they look at the, the deer, go by the creek. And so after it's all said and done, it's going to be a really, really nice area for families to come and see. But to, to answer your question, yeah, we're just going to beautify it and make it look as natural as possible.
Is that, is that purposely a desire to leave that gap between the road and that pipe?
The gap between the-
Yeah, open ditch.
On the-
Between the road, the road up there and that pipe, it's closest to us?
Okay.
The open ditch, or?
Yeah, so that pipe is closest to it. It, it, it's a little misleading, because it's actually about, I think it's 10 to 20-foot pipe, because the road, it, that's like right next to that house. So the actual opening of that pipe is actually a little further back, right on the road.
Okay, so the open ditch?
Yeah, that comes all the way down.
You're, you're going to, you purposely, by design, want to leave that open like that?
Well, for right now, and to kind of try to make it look a little natural. And also, we wanted to see, to be quite frank, if it was going to work fully before we dug anything deeper than that. But maybe at some point in time, we would probably look at maybe putting pipe all the way down under there.
Gotcha.
Hopefully, the deer, if the deer will let us.
We can, what they usually do, unless they're told that you're voting Thursday, they usually put it off to the next meeting. But for auditing reasons, if you can send me a, a letter or email with specifically what it's going toward, that would help a lot.
Okay, sure. Yeah.
Just, yeah, specifically, so.
Okay, definitely. Do that.
And that gives Todd the chance to see whether or not there's, you know, within, within the budget lines that were already approved, what, you know, where it would come from, and, and opportunity to-
LRC3, too, right?
Yeah.
Good deal.
Thank you, Jim, for your time.
Thank you, Guy.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Next on the agenda would be the Streetscapes update, Austin Painter.
Good evening. Streetscape project has been something that we've brought before you quite a bit, but we want to give another update, should be short and sweet. Recently, on September 3rd, we had the bid opening for Streetscapes, and we're happy to announce that the lowest bidder was under our funding amount provided by VDOT. So we are moving and provided a recommendation to VDOT to give authorization to, to give award to this contractor. The contractor is Summit Contracting, is the apparent low bidder currently. And we are awaiting VDOT's confirmation to essentially give the notice award and notice to proceed. Estimated time for that is three to six weeks to hear back from them. At that point, we should be able to start the project. Our estimate is for the early November to be the start of the project, and for that to run 180 days and to end somewhere around mid-May, for the extent of the project. We're satisfied so far, and our, we have reviewed the, the bid in total, and our engineering firm has also given their recommendation and agree to award this contractor with the bid. The number associated with the bid, sorry, just one second. Closed on me. Totaled to $860,387, which again, is under our funding amount, which is all good news. Any questions?
What will the, the additional funding be able?
The local match?
Well, where the bid came in, under what was, I guess-
Allocated or granted?
Allocated originally. Who will the additional funding be, you know, the difference, the gap between the two available for anything, or it just, just reduce?
Change orders?
It'll just reduce the local match amount? Okay.
No, no, we will pay 20%.
Of, of, of that contract?
Yes.
And any change orders?
It, it's going to be essentially used as contingency, as with most construction projects around now. It's always good to have contingency. So this is hoping to look at a well-funded and good-scope project.
That's awesome. And just to, and I know we've been told this, but just as a reminder for myself, that, the scope of that bid, does it take down the, the old streetlights?
Yes, it will.
So that, they'll come down through that process? And this contractor actually handles putting up all the new street lighting and the trees, and they handle it all, or is that, is there any separate bidding as part of that?
The scope of this project is to handle all of the electrical wiring for all the streetlights. It was voted and decided previously by council to remove the streetlights from the scope of the project, to give more selection to staff to decide the look of the streetlights. In doing so, we get to essentially choose what they look like. So we will have to provide purchase and installation of those separately.
Of the lighting.
Any other questions?
The 180 days, that's for both sides of the street, right?
Yes.
Because previously, so it'll be hopefully three months per side, 90 days per, I mean, not, it's not going to be exactly that, but that's the idea, is that it's not going to be both sides under construction for 180 days. Am I remembering that correctly, or is that not what's-
Yeah, you do one side and then the others, that's correct.
They, they have a whole traffic plan, so-
Okay.
Stipulations of access to each building. We, again, it's more work of the sidewalks, so there, there's, they have an extensive traffic plan outlining of how that they're going to achieve that. It's not necessarily that they-
They're going to do every bit of one side and every bit of the other, they're going to sort of-
Yes, but it is written in there, all the stipulations that, that council requested, and citizens also want.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Austin.
All right. Next on the agenda is discussions, NRVRC Office Building Project and Charter Amendment. That would be Mr. Day.
Okay, a couple of meetings back, I informed council of the intentions for Kevin Byrd, Executive Director for Planning District, to relocate their office from Fair Lawn, it exists right now, their office is presently at Fair Lawn, but they're looking at a, a location in Christiansburg. And what they're looking for is each locality, and I'll just, I'll be specific, but you've got every jurisdiction, Floyd County, Giles County, which includes the towns within, or the unincorporated Parrishburg, Nares, Rich Creek, Pembroke, Pulaski, including us, Montgomery County, Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Radford, Radford University, Virginia Tech, and New River Community College, will all participate in the purchase of that building. They've outgrown the existing facility that they have. It's my understanding, if I recall correctly, they pay about $65,000 a year rent there at that facility. The building that they're purchasing is in your packet. It's got an upfront, it's got an upfront value of about $1.2 million of equity in it, or the purchase value that they already have. I'm encouraging council to obviously consider it a positive move for the town. I, I feel like we absolutely need to support it. Our share of that is just north of $158,000. We can make that payment to them annually or in a lump sum. And after talking to Jack in finance, and Reese, chime in anytime, we feel like it's because of the interest rate that we are getting right now. This sum of money, the interest rate on, on a comparable account that's got about $160-some thousand in it that we get, we make about $725, uh, $725 a month interest. So pay-as-you-go is favorable. Absolutely not looking for that direction tonight, whether it's a lump sum or pay by the year or the month. The support for the move is what the Planning District is desperately needing right now from the town of Pulaski. And just for the record, if there's any locality that, for whatever reason, does not participate, it absolutely will kill the project. So just throwing that out there. And by the way, there, there are, there's one other locality that's, that's questionable right now, but I would encourage council to obviously jump on board with this project. It's a good location. Hate to lose them out of Pulaski County, but I think it's a positive move, plus it's got $1.2 million in equity up front.
Yeah, so just a little bit of more context is, for those of you who are familiar, they're currently in Innovation Center down by the golf course, Terrance Landing area. But they've been there for 20 years, and they started in one room, and now they're in about six, sort of spread out, including one that was a storage closet. So they've really grown a lot. The Regional Commission, Tyler used to be on there, and I don't know if anybody else, but they do a lot. They helped us with our comprehensive plan, they do grant management. And so localities like this really benefit from the work that they're doing. The reason that we're getting such a good deal on this building is that when Atlantic Bank bought, whatever, I can't remember the name of the bank, American National Bank and Trust Company, they had to divest certain locations for regulatory purposes. And so it's a building that's been, had some water damage a few years back, and so it's been completely redone. So it's really an opportu-, it's kind of almost a no-brainer, but it is a substantial amount of funds. We've talked about it a lot at the Regional Commission, but everybody there, from all the various jurisdictions, have been very, very, very positive about the goal. It would be, I think, a real asset to the whole New River Valley. And hopefully, you know, they get good news. I mean, I've heard talk about rate cuts at the Fed level, so hopefully that'll be a good turn for getting a reasonable. So that $158,000 might even be a little bit less when we get the actual numbers in. But the other thing is, is that the charter of the organization has, requires that it be in Pulaski County. Prior to that, it was in the city of Radford for about 30 years. So that is something we also need to vote on, I believe, to approve the charter amendment to allow them to relocate their headquarters.
Has Pulaski County or the Innovation Center voiced any, anything through this process?
I don't think, I, I know that they've been, they know about it- I don't think, I, I know that they've been, they know about it. Um, like I said, um, they're kind of at full capacity. And the cost of even renovating some of the other spaces there is um, prohibitively. I mean, they're talking north of seven hundred thousand dollars just to renovate a space that they wouldn't own. And as last I heard, that space was fully rented, Innovation Center, so.
Yeah, that's what I've always heard.
Yes, I, I think, I, I don't, there's been no, no objections from Pulaski County. I think they're, it'd be good for them to have a chance for new businesses to come in, expand, et cetera.
Mr. Day, I believe you said that there was one locality that potentially has opposition to it. Is what, what is the opposition, I guess?
It's not uh, political, it's absolutely financial. So they're looking at other, other methods to do it. But having one locality is obviously going to make it hard on the other localities to support a project if you got one that's not. And having to substitute for that locality is kind of out of the question, so.
But at the same time, I, I know that Montgomery County is talking about paying their full six hundred thousand dollars upfront. And even there's been some suggestion that they may sort of backstop the loan. They just basically take out the loan on their books and sort of have a pass through from all the other localities. So there's strong support um, throughout. Um, so there's, you know, and that's the, one of the biggest chunks of it. Is being able to do that, which might even, again, bring down your interest costs and the overall cost to the project, so.
That's correct. Montgomery County is uh, looking at that. We just got two, two, two motions, Mayor, and again, hope council can, can view them favorably. One of them, one of them being uh, the uh, the bylaws with respect to the location, the other one supporting the project. And again, I'm not asking for the funds tonight, I'm just asking to support it one way or the other.
Just for the record, there's going to be a meeting on September twenty-sixth where the whole board's going to decide on, you know, see all the financing options and make a decision about how that's all going to work out, so.
Which is why they need an answer from Pulaski.
So all you need tonight is just a motion of support?
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, should we do it two motions or just one?
I think I questioned it too. I think they're needing two motions.
Okay, so a motion to amend the charter of the New River Valley Regional Commission to remove the language about them being located in Pulaski County. Um, and uh, anywhere in the New River Valley to
Second.
May I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. Clont?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
Mayor Collin?
Hi.
And then the second would be a motion that we support the purchase of the um, of the new building. And that will, where, and is that it or do we?
That will consist of the locality's willingness to pay yearly or lump sum.
Our proportionate share.
Our proportionate shares. And just for the, just for the record, we're fortunate enough, thanks to previous management and existing staff, to be able to have that option and do it comfortably. So just want to put that out there. The funds are there for that to have.
Yeah, I specifically asked Mr. Day about whether or not it might make sense to invest that money and basically only spend whatever we're not getting out of that hundred and sixty. So hopefully by the end of it, we still have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and we've only paid out of pocket some much smaller proportion of that. So let me do that again. A motion to uh, support the purchase of the new building for the New River Valley Regional Commission and fulfill our financial obligations as, you know, per our percentage.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. Clont?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
Mayor Collin?
Hi. All right. Moving on, we're to the public comment period. I have no speaker slips, so we'll go to the consent agenda. So for your consideration would be September third, twenty twenty-four, Town Council Meeting Minutes. If one of you would like to make a motion to accept, if you see no problems with it.
Mr. Mayor, I make a mo, uh, make a motion to approve Town Council Meeting Minutes, Tuesday, September third, twenty twenty-four, as written.
Second.
May I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. Clont?
Mr. Dawson.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
Hi. Moving on to the council comments, uh, Mr. Clark?
I don't have any tonight, thank you.
All right. Mr. Dawson?
No comment. I just, um, you know, usually we talk about things that we need to work on. Figured it'd be worth just uh, thanking Mr. Day and the town staff, you know, a quick moment. I know they've been, had uh, full plates pretty non-stop and Mr. Day's hit the ground, you know, having no choice but to run. But uh, that's a good thing and it speaks towards how much projects are still rolling and working and moving forward and, and so we certainly appreciate the work you're doing.
Mr. Clont? Mr. Reese?
Uh, just wanted to say again, thank you. I, I think I mentioned last time I was here, there was some uh, pothole or place where they had done some, dug up for a water main break. And it looks like a few days after that, it's got filled in and repaved and thank you for that. I did want to note, I did note that um, it's a lot of new building I've been noticing going on. And I know previously you'd sent out to council a list of new building permits. I'd love to see from then to now and, and if you could include the other one, just so we can compare, just, just added, just so. Cause I do think, I did notice that um, the folks who were doing the Main Street, three buildings on Main Street. I think they're doing that other project on First Street and it looks like they're getting started on that and it's already looking much better. Not having scrap metal out in that yard. So I'm, and, and I know this is all a long process, but um, you know, it's, it's nice to see a lot of, a lot of work by staff and other, other folks uh, in town paying off and coming into some real, real improvements in the, just, not just the, the way the town looks, but some real genuine, um, genuine improvements to, you know, our quality of life. You know, I'd love to see more um, buildings. I was even noticing that I was walking down a block that I, in my neighborhood. And there was a point five years ago when, if there was, say, six houses on the block, four of them were empty or, or pretty much derelict. And now four or five of them have been, you know, redone, there's families living there. And I think that that's just a really great sign for this community that we're seeing, um, you know, lots of people deciding that this is a, a great place to live. And really taking pride in their, in their homes and communities. Um, and I think that's only going to get better. So thank you.
So we're in September, so we've started working on the treat trail again, I understand. Jackie is spearheading again. If there's questions, do they, what do they do if somebody, like the businesses, do they email HR or? They'll send it to you, right? No, no. H R at Pulaskitown.org. Okay, and that's going to be on Halloween, okay, and five to seven. Okay. Yes, I reiterate that the town is looking better. It's every day it's looking a little better and a little better. There's stuff that's happening that has needed to happen for a while. And I appreciate what you've done since you've got here, since you've hit the ground running, rolling, whatever you've been doing, right? So, but um, but yeah, I mean, you don't fix a town overnight, but it's, a lot of stuff's happening. So I appreciate that and just wanted to reiterate our thanks. Now we'll move to the manager's report, so that would be you, Mr. Day.
Okay, yes, you guys are right. We've absolutely got a lot going on and uh, incredible staff and the diversity that this staff has faced over the last, well, since I've been here. With some unfortunate situations, um, they've really stood the test of time, so um, kudos to them, great job. I would almost dare to say when it comes to living spaces, the town of Pulaski has got probably more on the table right now under construction than just about any other town in the Planning District. I'm not going to compare it to the counties, but I'm not that bold, but um, with two schools under construction and um, also the, the flash and light here, which is Shaw Development. Well, hopefully, uh, that development will take off in the next couple of months or so. So I'm talking to David Hagan, that project is hopefully going to start in October. So I'm saying this, I'm hoping he's listening, put a little pressure on David Hagan. But it is, uh, we've got incredible opportunity. The hundred and fifty-five acres, as you well know, is under some serious negotiation right now, which will show a lot of future development there, recreation, homes, affordable homes, by the way. So we're looking forward to a lot of projects. The Streetscape project uh, is coming underway. There's a lot of great things happening. I'm just tickled pink to be part of it. Also, we'll let council know that um, we received another grant uh, from D H C D uh, on the brewery, which was an, an additional two hundred thousand dollars to go toward the brewery. If you'll recall, there was some sketchy conversations that I had with council, a little concerned about that project and some of the funding. The locality is responsible for remodeling that building and bringing it up to where a brewery can operate out of it, not supply the stainless steel, but just make the structure where a business can operate. So we applied for an additional two hundred thousand dollars and we were awarded those funds, so. Staff in all areas are looking at opportunities, um, engineers looking at opportunities, engineers talking to VDOT about, you know, primary extension, revenue sharing projects. So S G R projects, there's a lot of opportunities out there, a lot of, um, a lot of projects to come. And really looking forward to seeing them materialize and come to an end. So if you got any questions about any of the projects that we're doing, just let us know. Also want to remind uh, remind council that the cruise in on Saturday, September twenty-first, from eleven to four. Also, the last marketplace of the season is the twenty-four. September twenty-fourth is the train station from four to seven. And Harvest and Harmony Festival, September twenty-seventh, uh, from four to eight. That's also in Jackson Park. That's all I've got.
All right. Um, just as a reminder, October first, twenty twenty-four will be our next um, Town Council meeting. Close session at six, open session at seven. Have nothing else on the agenda, so I declare this meeting adjourned.